...in the comfort of their homes. Dental experts say more than half the population is not getting regular dental care, particularly low-income seniors.
And six years of a demonstration clearly showed that the model worked, that we were able to reach people who weren't getting regular dental care, have diagnostic and preventive services, keep people healthy on-site, as opposed to having them end up with toothaches and infections and all the other problems of neglected dental disease.
Dr. Paul Glassman said this mobile dental service can be used in many different locations, such as nursing homes, Head Start and community centers, elementary schools and residences for people with disabilities. While the city of L.A. braces for El Nino like a horror movie sequel, heavy rains are expected to wreak havoc on Southern California once again. But as Gil Reyes reports, there are things homeowners can do to weather the storm.
Nearly eighteen years after El Nino rains pounded the state, the storm pattern that toppled trees, crushed cars, and flooded streets is expected to return with a vengeance.
So we can't prepare for everything, but what we can do is really have a communications plan starting now with the public on things they can do.
Councilman Mitchell Englander, chair of the Public Safety Committee, wants the media to encourage preparation at home before rains arrive later this fall. The good news is, the city says it's ready on their end. L.A. sanitation officials say all catch basins and storm drains are cleared and checked regularly to support the expected log jam of water and debris. L.A. city agencies say they're more prepared now than ever before to deal with the possibility of severe flooding, like the type that typically happens here at the Sepulveda Basin. Part of the reason is improved coordination between agencies in terms of response and preparation. Now it's time for the public to do their part.
So what we want the public to do is conserve the use of wastewater and flushing.
Adel Hagik Khalil of L.A. Sanitation says limiting water use in the kitchen and bathroom, especially on rainy days, will help prevent clogging the sewer system. He also reminds residents to secure loose items like trash and recycling bins, which can easily block storm drains. This month, it took just one garbage bin to block a drain and cause havoc in Temple City on a rainy day.
Blocked it, and the entire neighborhood flooded.
Englander also urging people to invest in rain barrels. The city offers hundred-dollar rebates per barrel. They save water, money, and even possibly your street from sewer overflow.
But I think we're prepared. We're gonna do everything we can to prevent that from happening, but the public can't help us.
Preparing for El Nino. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Councilmember Englander's committee is preparing a more expansive media blitz for El Nino preparations. Expect that in early November. While city leaders and students in Los Angeles marked International Walk to School Day by walking to campus, that's the focus of this week in tweets. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti's office tweeted a pic of the mayor and councilmember Corrin Price walking to school with some kids, posting, "We're celebrating Walk to School Day today at Dolores Huerta Elementary School." Price posted a pic with the mayor and a few students, writing, "Had fun walking with Mayor Garcetti and dozens of children to Dolores Huerta Elementary School in the new ninth. What a great way to get some physical activity and raise awareness on the importance of pedestrian safety." Councilmember Mitchell Farrell also tweeted a pic of him walking to school with students. He wrote, "What a great turnout for Walk to School Day at Grant Elementary in East Hollywood. Thank you to the school's principal for hosting us." And Great Streets retweeted a post from Streets Blog, which showed some kids walking with police officers. The post read, "Ah, some heartwarming moments from Walk to School Day." And that's a look at this week in tweets. Well, families in Panorama City are getting on board as they celebrate new improvements in their neighborhood recreation center. This new green and yellow makeshift train has just arrived to its new home at the Sepulveda Rec Center, and the neighborhood kids didn't waste any time climbing onboard. The train is part of a newly completed play area for kids in Panorama City.
I have a three-and-a-half-year-old son. For him to come out and enjoy himself and go on the slide and the swing, so it's very nice.
The train-themed playground, complete with custom play structures that mimic a train depot and train cars, also offers play areas that are designed for children of varying abilities.
It's so beautiful. I, so many ways to let kids have fun. There is a train, there is a stop right there to go around on the park, to play with sand.
Officials recently celebrated the opening with a ribbon cutting. The new play area was made possible thanks to a collaboration between the Department of Wreckin Parks and community partners like Shane's Inspiration and First Five L.A., organizations that are dedicated to supporting the needs of young children and their families.
Together, we can promote more physical activity with play spaces like this and help children maintain a healthy week.
Community members also gave their input in creating two unique playground designs, one train-themed tot park and the other a plane-themed playground. And the kids couldn't get enough, sliding down the slides and swinging back and forth. Nothing like a day at a brand-new park to release some energy. The playground is the thirtieth play area to open in partnership with the city and Shane's Inspiration. Well, a dance group that'll get you tapped into the beat, exploring L.A.'s undiscovered neighborhoods, and it's the Hard Knock Life at the Pantages Theater, here's this week's things to do. Since Rhapsody in Taps' beginnings in 1981, artistic director and choreographer Linda Sol-Ellison and Rhapsody in Taps' artists have created a vast repertoire, celebrating the tap tradition and exploring new directions in tap choreography. Featuring three world premieres, Heart Song and Boot Brigade, two works exploring tap, body, and boot percussion, The Rhapsody in Taps presents its 34th annual Los Angeles season. Experience brilliant poetic tap and music improvisations, energetic ensemble dancing, infectious rhythms, and foot padding bounce in your seats fun on Saturday, October 17th, at the Eritani Theater at 244 South San Pedro Street in downtown L.A. Visit rhapsodyintaps.com for more. On Saturday, October 17th, and Sunday, October 18th, the nonprofit L.A. Commons will host its fifth annual Found L.A. Festival of Undiscovered Neighborhoods. Following last year's tie to Mayor Eric Garcetti's Great Streets program, this year's theme is driven by the idea of mapping one's own Los Angeles. The Free Weekend of Tours is inspired by the new heyday release Latitude's Angeles Atlas, which brings nineteen diverse local writers together with a cartographer to explore aspects of the city's geography, history, and culture. The essays range from quirky to provocative, but each is grounded by the physical, societal, and perceived boundaries and neighborhoods of L.A. For neighborhood-specific tours, visit lacommens.org/programs. The world's best-loved musical returns in time-honored form and is perfect for the entire family. This Tony Award-winning production of Annie will be a brand-new incarnation of the iconic original. Annie includes such unforgettable songs as "It's the Hard Knock Life," "Easy Street," "I Don't Need Anything But You," plus the eternal anthem of optimism, "Tomorrow." It's been described as big, warm-hearted, and funny. Annie runs now through November 1st at the Pantages Theater located at 6233 Hollywood Boulevard in Los Angeles. For tickets, visit hollywoodpantages.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana K., and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
You with the stupid hat. Come here, closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, October 14th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, I believe we do have a quorum. Let's get started. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonn, Buscaeno, Sodio, Andrew Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kocorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris, Dawson moves. Price seconds. Next.
Mr. President, before we run through the agenda, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue-
Did we approve the minutes? I thought we missed something here, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. Bonn in seconds. You see, I keep an eye on you, Mr. Clerk.
That you do, sir.
I was testing you.
Before getting into today's agenda, there's a request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue Items 1H and 1B to October 28th, and Item 1O to November 13.
Okay, so without objection on those items, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Items one through eight are items noticed for public hearing.
Cards. Do we have cards on those items?
Item one, sir.
Okay, let's hold Item one. On the remaining items, members, any specials, one through eight? Okay, let's prepare Madam Clerk to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Clerk.
Items nine through 20 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, special, Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, yes. Items nine and 19, please.
Nine and 19 for Mr. Englander. Mr. Weezer.
Fifteen for technical amendments, please.
Fifteen for Mr. Weezer. Members, any other? I don't see any, so why don't we prepare to vote on the remaining items? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Good. That brings us where?
Items 21 through 38 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Out of the corner of my eye, I see Mr. Corretts.
Items 22 and 38, special.
Twenty-two and 38 will hold for Mr. Corretts. Members, any other specials? Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Items 21, 22, 24, 26, 27, 33, 35, and 38, sir.
Okay, let's hold those items, and let's vote on the remaining. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Buscaeno has arrived.
Very good, sir. Items 39 through 43 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yes, until I chat with Mr. Kocorian. What about ordinances? I've weighed 12 now.
Very good, sir. We could reconsider those. Those would be Items 23, 25, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on reconsideration of those items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those items, Mr. Clerk, are now before this body. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, I'll defer back to you, Mr. Clerk. Where are we?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentation or items called special?
Okay. So at this time, I think we want to defer to Mr. Englander with one of our presentations for the day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really appreciate it. Today is a very important day, as we are launching tomorrow yet again. We're proud to join with the Southern California Earthquake Center, at USC, and the Los Angeles Fire Department, Emergency Management Department, and of course, MySafe L.A. to encourage people to prepare in our city for the next big, not when, we know that, not if, but when, the next earthquake is going to hit, as we gear up for tomorrow's Great California Shakeout. It's taking place tomorrow, October 15th, at 10:15 a.m. So tomorrow, we've got to make sure that all Angelinos join with the rest of the state of California to drop, cover, and hold on. This year, more than 10 million people in California and over 40 million people worldwide, 40 million people worldwide, will participate in the largest earthquake drill in the world. MySafe L.A. has prepared a short video to demonstrate and encourage people to join the Great Shakeout. So if you can please turn your attention to the monitors.
Drop, cover, and hold on.
Drop, cover, and hold on.
Those three words can save your life when the ground starts to shake beneath you. Be quick, smart L.A.
It's estimated that more than 70% of California's population resides within 30 miles of a fault line. It's never been more essential to teach our children and remind our community to be prepared. It's not too late to register. You simply go on and participate by visiting www.shakeout.org to find out more and receive vital resources for your home, school, or businesses to participate. In addition to preparing, this is also a time to remember the past. We have seen the devastation of major earthquakes and what they can cause. Over 20 years ago, the 94 Northridge earthquake taught us how we need to be better prepared. A 6.7 magnitude struck January 17th, 1994, at 4:31 a.m., killing 57 people, and it attributed to 72 deaths, injuring 11,000, and left 22,000 people homeless, damaging over 114,000 residential and commercial structures. One of the most destructive natural disasters in U.S. history, with a direct estimated loss totaling over $41 billion. Within the first 24 hours, the Los Angeles Fire Department responded to over 2,200 incidents. There were over 110 fires and over 3,000 to 4,000 water main breaks. We've done a lot here in the city of Los Angeles before that and after. The city of Los Angeles leads by example, in fact, and we have been the first in setting earthquake mitigation policies, recovery protocols, and partnerships. First in the state to mandate retrofitting of unreinforced masonry buildings, that occurred back in 1981, initiated by then-councilman Hal Burnson. As a result, it saved thousands of lives during the Northridge earthquake. We were the first to establish community emergency response teams, our CERT program, also established then by Mr. Earthquake Hal Burnson in 1986, and then Assistant Chief Frank Borden. Now with over 50,000 CERT-trained volunteers citywide, we modeled that and FEMA copied it, duplicated it, replicated it, and spread it throughout the nation and other cities. The first CERT team was 30 members from Devonshire Division, the Neighborhood Watch Group, and also established now the model being used everywhere. We were the first to partner with the U.S. Geological Survey, and the first to revise that partnership and bring USGS in-house, our own Dr. Lucy Jones. Just last week, we actually passed some of the most aggressive earthquake retrofitting mandates in the city of Los Angeles compared to any other major city in the country. We also initiated an OK help sign program that we've distributed hundreds of thousands of these, including door hangers, where we know people are gonna have to shelter in place. We know that our first responders are not gonna be there to care for everybody. So we put together an aftershock program to teach people what they can do to take care of themselves and help their neighbors. We've also instituted a program where they can simply rip off the response card and put it in their window or on their door to say whether they need help or if they're okay. So first responders and neighbors can quickly look at a community and find out how people are doing. In fact, I wanted to share a quick story with you, something that happened during the last few years of distributing these. There's a mobile home park in my district, and it's a bunch of seniors. And what they do every single morning is a group of them get up early in the morning, and they go door-knock all of their neighbors to make sure that they're okay, to check on each other in a wellness program. And it's very difficult for some of these seniors to navigate the stairs that lead into the front door. And so what they did is they created their own program out of these, and what they tell their neighbors is to put this in their window by 8 o'clock in the morning, so they can simply walk through their community and see if the OK sign is in their window. It's supposed to come down by noon, so that way, when they do their second walk in the afternoon, if it's not down, they know something's wrong, and then they can go up and walk up the stairs and door-knock it to check on their neighbors. This was initiated after we passed these out and distributed them on their own, and they came up with their own program. And it just goes to show that it's all about our communities and our neighbors working with each other to make sure that we're all prepared. I'd like to now introduce Mark from USC, and he's gonna walk us through what the Shakeout is all about and how you two can be prepared. Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Mark Benthe, and I'm the Director for Communication, Education, and Outreach at the Southern California Earthquake Center, which is headquartered at USC. As part of what I do, I lead the Earthquake Country Alliance, the organization back in 2008 that works with all the partner organizations like USGS, CalOES, and the city, and many others, Red Cross, and many others, to organize the first great Southern California Shakeout. We had an international earthquake conference organized by the city, and it was a great event with 5.4 million participants throughout Southern California. And it was supposed to be a one-time event, never to happen again, everybody, this is the time. Immediately afterwards, we started hearing from people, "What about next year? What's the date for next year's drill? What about us in Northern California?" And then on and on, and so- And then on and on, until now, we have 45 states, all five U.S. Island Territories, Districts Columbia, and participation in more than 60 countries. And while, yes, the shakeout, International Shakeout Day of Action is technically tomorrow, it actually starts today at 1:15 p.m. when New Zealand has their shakeout drill our time. And they have about 1.4 million people registered, which is about a third of their population. That's pretty significant, but I'll let you know that the city of Los Angeles tomorrow has 1.6 million people participating out of the 10.5 million of California. Now would be the, California is the largest state in the U.S. participating. The city of Los Angeles would be the second largest if it were its own state in terms of participation across the country. We'll have 22 million people worldwide participating tomorrow. The numbers continue to rise, and 42 million worldwide the entire year. People are doing shakeout drills throughout the entire year. And while 1.6 million is a lot, it's certainly not the full population of the city, and there's still more we can do in years to come, and through all your districts to include more schools and businesses and government agencies and nonprofit organizations and all of those, and everyone, of course, families that should know what to do to protect themselves during earthquakes. So shakeout got started in the city, continues to be strong in the city, and we look forward to working together in years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaking of the CERT program and the things we've been doing there, I want to throw out a challenge to all of my colleagues. So the challenge is this: My staff is all CERT-certified. I challenge you to bring your staff in to get CERT-certified. It's great not just because you learn a lot. It's great getting the entire staff together to participate, and it's phenomenal since we are the first responders as councilmembers as well during any type of disaster, that you have your staff know how to respond on that level. And so I encourage and urge all of you to do the same and to talk about, a little bit about that, as well as what we're doing with the Fire Department and their participation each and every day, but particularly with the Great California Shakeout as our fire chief. Chief?
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Chief.
President Wesson. Good morning, councilmembers. Good morning. Thank you for inviting us here today to bring a focus to this important drill.
Hold, hold, Chief. Okay, we have a disturbance in the back. Can we please refrain? In fact, sergeants, we're going to have to take this outside. I guess you're going to have to remove them.
Mr. President, they literally are disrupting the meeting.
Not now. We got it under control. I'm so sorry, Chief. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Our good friend, Dr. Lucy Jones, tells us that we have a greater than 50% chance of having a magnitude 7.5 or greater earthquake somewhere in California in the next 30 years. We are overdue in Los Angeles. We have an outstanding Fire Department, thanks to your support, and we're trying to be there for everything we can to help you, but in the event of a major earthquake, it's going to take all of us to get us through that. And to do that, we are encouraging people to participate in this drill. And the message we send is that you should look at it in three phases: What you should do now, what you should do during an earthquake, and what you should do after. What you should do now is prepare. Look at your utilities, learn how to shut them off, consider being CERT-trained, learn CPR. In the event of having an earthquake, we want you to drop, cover, and hold on until the earthquake's over. After the earthquake, do a personal assessment. Are you injured? Is your family injured? Can you handle those minor injuries? Is your, are your utilities compromised? If so, shut them down. And lastly, the more we can prevent or encourage preparation, the better we're going to be. I was on duty on that day when we had the Northridge earthquake, and Councilman Englander's stats are correct, we were running throughout the city. So it's going to take all of us to get us through this earthquake. To get more information, go to lafd.org as well as mysafelad.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Great. Thank you very much. And one of the things I like to do, and you know, often, many of us, or all of us actually, are out there speaking to community groups and service clubs, chambers, faith-based organizations. Oftentimes, what I will do is, before I start speaking on any particular matter, I will throw out a trivia question to them and say, before we get into any conversation, I want to ask anybody here, do they know the three most important things that they need to keep next to the bed in case of an emergency? Do they know, and I'll throw that out there and see if they know the answers. I'll test them and say, how many drops of water do you need to put, of drops of chlorine do you need to put in a gallon of water to clean it? If you need to drink standing water, if you need to empty your rain barrel, if you need to go to your swimming pool, if there's things you need to do because we've lost water because of an emergency, what is it you need to do? How many drops of chlorine do you put in? How long do you wait? And then what happens afterwards? And it's amazing to me how many people don't know the answer. It's amazing to me that they don't know, you take eight drops of chlorine and you put it in a gallon of water, you wait about 20 minutes. But that's not the amazing thing. The interesting thing is, after you ask them, you ask them this: It's been sitting for 20 minutes, then you smell the water. The question is this: If you still smell chlorine, is it safe to drink yet, or do you wait for the smell to go away?
I might have to stop, Mr. Englander. Sergeants, I'm not going to have another outbreak. You may want to ask both, not may, why don't we ask both of them to, or remove both of them from the chambers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the answer, for those of you that don't know, is if you still smell the chlorine 20 minutes later, and it has a little faint smell of chlorine, it's then safe to drink. If you don't smell it, add another drops, wait another 20 minutes, another eight drops. If we can have them removed, Mr. President...
That's, they're being removed now. Again, Mr. Attorney, I want you to go on the record where it relates to this disturbance. Could we, sergeants, please, and I'm so sorry for the interruption, but let's, please...
Remove Ms. Antonio Ramirez.
Gently, but let's remove her.
That was, that was Antonio Ramirez, one of our regulars who often disrupts the meetings and has to be removed, unfortunately. So thank you for handling that, Mr. President. So with that, those little trivia questions to open a community meeting isn't just about the trivia. It's about making sure that people are engaged and thinking about it, because it's amazing to me how many people don't know these things. And with that, in talking about emergency preparedness, is our very own Jim Featherstone, our General Manager of EMD.
Thank you, Councilman Englander. Good morning, members of the City Council. Keep my comments very short. I think of things in threes. Three things to think about on this very special day is, preparedness in Los Angeles starts with the individual. Every Angelino can duck, drop, cover, and hold on. So if every individual does that, it multiplies across the spectrum of the city. So preparedness starts with the individual. The second one is, if we prepare for the earthquake, we're pretty much prepared for most major disasters that maybe fall the city. And the third thing that I'd like to share with you this morning is, urge everyone to sign up at notifyLA.org. It's the city's mass communication system. Right now, we have access to the 911-capable landline devices. We ask you to join EMD, Councilman Englander, and everyone else to ask their constituencies, their neighbors, their friends, to sign up your mobile device, notifyLA.org. That way, we can get the information to you in a time of crisis. So three things: Preparedness starts with the individual. If we're prepared for the earthquake, we're prepared for most big issues that may happen in the city. And sign up on notifyLA.org so we can get in touch with everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, our Executive Officer of MySafeLA, David Barrett. David?
Good morning, Council President Wesson and councilmembers. Thanks for having us here today. What you're seeing in front of you is a collaboration of people, organizations, agencies that are working together to better the safety readiness of the city. A few points to make that would follow on with what you've heard already: Earthquakes are not convenient. They are most likely to occur when you are least prepared for them. The process of preparation may sound redundant or overly simple, but I'll share something with you. On the way up here this morning on the train, I saw that FEMA had broadcast about the shakeout. And there were multiple responses saying, I'm not drop, covering, holding on, I'm going to get out of the building. One of the things that I want everyone here to try and remember is that our instinct, when we have something we're not prepared for, is to get away from it. And the last thing you want to do, the worst thing that you could do, is to run. Don't run outside, don't run inside. Otherwise, drop, cover, and hold on becomes a new phrase: Run, fall, and get killed. So let's all think about what we shouldn't do as well. MySafeLA collaborates with the LA Fire Department and others to put on drills during the shakeout that help prepare not only firefighters but students. Tomorrow, we will be in Councilmember Harris Dawson's district at the Marlton School, doing a drill with deaf students. These special individuals don't know how to communicate in the same way that we do in the event of an emergency, and firefighters are going to get a great opportunity to learn from them. And in the evening, we will do something similar in Councilmember Ruse's district at the Park La Brea Apartments, where we'll fill a theater with older adults and teach them how to drop, cover, and hold on when they're in public. So think about the least convenient thing that might happen and make yourself a little bit prepared for it. By the way, there will be an earthquake tomorrow night when the Dodgers destroy their opponents. And our very own Public Information Officer, Todd Lights, is calling the game in terms of PA announcements. So I hope everyone roots for our Dodgers tomorrow, and Councilmember O'Farrell, an early happy birthday for this Saturday.
Well done. Thank you very much. You can't top that one. With that, I want to thank you all so much and encourage all of you, as well as your staff, to sign up for the shakeout and make sure that you share it on your social media, that you put it out there, letting people know that it's not just the Great California shakeout of 2015. This is a shakeup call, that we have to be prepared. We have to let people know. So with that, we've got a resolution here, a certificate of recognition to the Great California shakeout of 2015, signed by all of you, as well as our great Mayor of the City, Eric Garcetti, and want to thank you all once again for participating. Thank you very much.
Okay, as we're taking a few photos, let's go to item 15, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. An amending motion, 15A, has been circulated.
Okay, and it's my understanding, there are no cards. So let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Mr. Murphy, are you here? Sean Murphy, come on up for item 24.
Yeah, good morning. Item 24, I support this item.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Sean, I'm sorry to let you go sit back down. We have item 27, one of your items as well.
Yes, item 27, it's another item we should support.
Thank you very much. So, Madam Clerk, on this item, why don't we open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
15 ayes.
That is approved. Okay, Mr. Walsh, I'm going to quickly go to item 21.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighland.org. This is the appointment of Sam Lucas to the Rent Adjustment Commission. We're all in favor of this. As you know, I got up here several years ago and accused someone of kiddie porn who was being nominated. Everyone said I was psychotic. Well, he's in jail now for kiddie porn. Everybody knows that. That's what happened. Now, we checked Sam Lucas clean, no kiddie porn. And we'd just like to say, for the record, that a Fire Department representative broke the rules by saying that the Mets and...
He is, he is not...
He's destroyed. He said he...
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Okay, now, members, he's off. Let's prepare to vote. And Mr. Walsh is disrupting the meeting. One more disruption, then he should be ejected as well. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, it's my understanding, Mr. Kukorian, that we can move forward on the closed-session items. Would you speak to that for a moment?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Items number, numbers 39 through 43, the items, agendas for closed session, were all considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. These are settlements, and Budget and Finance recommends approval of the City Attorney's recommendations regarding the settlements. We can do that in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, let's see if we can do that. Mr. Clerk, why don't you go through the items?
Very good, sir. Item 39, in the case entitled Edward Moreno et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $2.5 million in settlement. Item 40, in the case entitled Mario Santana versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend $750,000 in settlement. Item 41, in the cases entitled Tashana Howard versus City of Los Angeles et al. and Irma Howard versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend $2.85 million in settlement. Item 42, in the case entitled PW et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $2.5 million in settlement. And for item 43, in the case entitled Mark Gonhue versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $1.9 million in settlement.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio, are you ready for what I believe is our final presentation of the day?
My posse. This is my great-great-grandmother.
I'm happy you didn't bring all your cousins.
Yeah, that's true. The bus just got him from Tijuana.
21 tios. This is Dan Guerrero, not the UCLA Athletic Director. Somebody thought that that was going to be the case.
He's my first cousin.
He is your first cousin?
This is the other Dan.
This is his first cousin.
Really?
Yes. And so we thought, for some, we thought it was going to be the other Dan Guerrero, but I've got a lot of facts here to tell you about Dan Guerrero, and I'm going to read some of them just because they merit it. But if there's anyone who was going to disrupt a meeting today, it should have been Dan Guerrero, right? His father was the legendary Lalo Guerrero, and he had 21 uncles, 20, 21, like 21 siblings, tios or uncles.
She gave birth to 21, eight lived to adulthood.
Okay. Only eight, aunts and uncles, right? Imagine all the cousins. So they're, as he said, coming on a bus from Tijuana. The Chicanos can laugh if nobody else gets the joke. So Dan Guerrero began his multifaceted career in New York, where he moved from East Los Angeles at the age of 20. He performed off-Broadway in regional theaters, summer stock, and musical reviews in Manhattan's most fabled cabarets, including Bonsoir in the Greenwich Village. He later became a theatrical agent with clients in the original casts of countless Broadway musicals, including The Chorus Line, Cats, and many others that went on to win Tony Awards and future Hollywood stars. He re... He returned to Los Angeles for an equally successful time as a director of stage and television before turning his talents to producing and directing, which is where I met him in 1985 as a volunteer at the Los Angeles Theater Center for a fundraiser that produced a young man named George Lopez, and Culture Clash, and a few others. And of course, Gil Sadio was taking tickets, because I had another destiny, and not a theater. Guerrero's an influential activist, speaking out in print, television, radio interviews. He's our go-to guy in English and Spanish in both Latino-Chicano and LGBTQ issues. He's a popular figure. He speaks at all the national conferences, National Conference of La Raza, LULAC Youth Leadership Conference, the CTA, the National Education Association, in Washington, D.C. He is our guy. He's our man in the media. His activism and arts has been portrayed in many books and specials. Any story that talks about the presence of Latinos in media and art, Dan is the spokesperson. He was most recently at it as an educator. I think your father would be very proud of you. He's an educator at UCLA, the Caesar Chavez Center, and at the, what is it called? It's an LGBT center, right? Both departments are interfacing, and he's a professor there at UCLA. So today is his unbelievable, you know, fountain of youth, 75-years-old. We should all be so, so lucky. And as I said, I had the pleasure and privilege of meeting Dan as a volunteer at the L.A. Theater Center, volunteer for the Los Angeles Latino Theater Company. And it was emerging at that time, and I was a volunteer. And I met Dan, and I'd never met anybody, and he's heard me say this before, we all appreciate this, I've never met anybody as professional and as a person who had high standards, uncompromising in his standards as a director, as a producer, who just really believed that our presentations and what we did for our communities required us to be the absolute and very best that we could be. I'm so proud of him. I'm very excited to be here and participate in what's going to be a very Dan Guerrero day with this presentation and then a major celebration of his life. And I like that we do it while you're still here.
Yeah.
A major celebration of his life tonight at the L.A. Theater Center. So with that, the first cousin of Dan Guerrero from UCLA, the son of the legendary Lalo Guerrero, the incomparable Dan Guerrero here on his day. Sir.
Welcome.
Take center stage. Take center stage.
Welcome and congratulations, and you look great.
Not bad, right? Well, had I known that turning 75 would give me this great honor, I'd have done it in my 50s. But I am truly a product of Los Angeles, you know? My dad was born and raised in Tucson, as was my mom, so I was born in Tucson. But my dad was an early dreamer, and so he was sitting on Vera Street here at the Cafe Caliente in the late '30s. He married my mom, and as an infant, I came here. So I went to Humphreys, I went to Kern, I went to Garfield, I went to East L.A. College. And I was a dreamer too. So off, I went to New York for 20 years. But you can come home again. And I came home in the early '80s, and I've been in this great city ever since. And I'm very, very touched and grateful for this. And you're right, tonight, I'm being roasted at L.A.T.C. by Dolores Huerta, Culture Clash, Susanna Guzman. Oh, she's ready. So this is a great way to start it in a soft, kind way, because goodness knows what's going to happen tonight. So I thank, of course, Councilmember Sadio. I thank the entire City Council very, very much. And I ask this with all the respect in the world, but is there any talk at all about, like, a freeway named after me or anything? I'm just asking. Not the 405, but, okay? Thank you very, very much.
We've got plenty on the east side.
I'll take it. I'll take it. Thank you so very, very much.
Now, thank you for everything. Just give it up. And Mr. Sadio and Dan, you know, the great thing about a roast?
Yeah.
Is that you get the last word.
You got that right, yeah.
Mr. Sadio.
Smile here. Our favorite part of the day, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, all.
Let's go.
Perfect.
Okay, if I could ask Mr. Walsh to make his way down the center aisle. We're going to go to item 33. Mr. Walsh, please come forward. John Walsh on item 33. Going once, twice. All right, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, now, we're going to go to item 35, which is Mr. Walsh as well. Item 35, Mr. Walsh is not here. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Item 26, Mr. Previn, if you're here. I thought I saw him earlier. Item 26, Mr. Previn.
Good morning, Council President Wesson. It's Eric Previn from CD2, a resident. This is the Riverside Drive and Carpenter Avenue, Street Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. Now, finally, sir, one of these has arrived in an area where I'm very familiar with the territory. So this is a little street carpenter, and Riverside is a big boulevard, which is kind of near the Gelson's. So we have good lighting in this space in general, but now, what is it? The good team over at City Attorney, that's Christie Humano Hira, as well as the folks over at Bureau of Street Lighting, Mr. Ed Eberhinian, have come up with a plan. The plan is, let's raise some money, because we never use public money. We always assess from the residents to do this kind of work. So the need for the work is addressed very early in the document, where it says that it's the, I believe it's the, "public interest and convenience." So this will be certainly convenient, but it is also going to cost $818 on a regular basis. Two people are going to pay that, is my understanding. Now, this is in addition to whatever existing assessments they're already paying, by the way. This is not the only assessment. And here's the part that bummed me. If I were the public's lawyer, I would say, "It can be increased annually without further notice or ballot." I would say, "That's bad, Bloomingfield." I would say, "Hashtag Bloomingfield's knows, that is very bad." Then I would say, you know, there's two hearings, so we could address it at another time. Public Works has one on December 9th, and then there's another one on December 16th, where I guess Supervisor, Councilmember Krikorian will preside in this place. Maybe there is a real good reason for this. Maybe it was dark, and there was some terrible accident, or maybe there's a reason. But this is a business, and the one thing that I will ask for is the annual report on the Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. This will be an oral P.R.A., that's Public Record Act, sir. I know you're following along closely, to see that document, because that's where it talks about how we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. Englander, I'm going to let you start off on that item.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Mr. President, I'd like to ask our City Attorney, Janet, and Chief Terasus at the table. Colleagues, this ordinance is about drones. But it's not really about drones, it's about public safety. Drones are becoming increasingly popular in our communities. Drones aren't the problem, but the operators are. And where they jeopardize public safety, they need to be regulated. They serve a useful purpose in many industries, in film and television, in surveying, in looking at properties, in photography, but they also can cause and wreck havoc in the event of aircraft. So today, it's, we're launching a new hashtag, and it's "If they fly, we can't," which means one of these can take down an aircraft, one of these can take down and have taken down firefighting helicopters. They can't fly if these are in the air. So today, we're asking to pass a piece of legislation that's critically important, and I am so proud to partner with Council President Herb Wesson on this. Thank you for your leadership in this. Today, in the City of Los Angeles, we will limit the use of drones within a five-mile radius of an airport. We will limit the use when it interferes with manned aircraft. We will require the users to be in the line of sight with the drone at all times and bans night use. It will limit and require flight no higher than 400 feet above the Earth's surface and limit the use and operating no closer than 25 feet to any individual excluding takeoff and landings. The critical thing is, and the chief will walk us through this, is what happens? What happens when we have aircraft in the air trying to save lives and property? And this is responsible and reasonable legislation to make sure that we protect those Angelenos and life and property with these new drones that are out there in popularity. The popularity, just to give you an idea, there are over 2 million drones that were sold just last year alone. In fact, the leading drone manufacturer sells about 30,000, just them alone, a month. Given what the FAA has looked at in this, we know that there are only about 200,000 aircraft in the sky in the United States in any one time, yet we have 2 million of these sold last year alone. To keep you all safe as well, my staff removed the propeller, so I could not fly this around council chambers. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the fire chief as well, our City Attorney's Office, in helping to craft this very important piece of legislation, chief.
You know, chief, before you start, I do want to say that it was a real pleasure to work with Mr. Englander on, you know, bringing this before this council. For us, for me, it's about public safety. And when I stood with you weeks ago, and you said, "When you fly, we can't," it really hit home. And every second, we talk all the time about seconds count where it relates to saving an individual's life. Well, I think this is a perfect example of if we cannot allow you and your people to get in the air to, you know, try to fight fires or what have you, someone could be trapped where all they have is seconds. So I think this is a real, common-sense approach, and hopefully, Los Angeles, I think, will be the leader on this issue. So again, we thank you for your support, and the floor is yours now, chief.
Thank you, President Wesson, and Councilmember Englander, and City Council members. I congratulate you on being proactive on this issue. Over a month ago, we had a press conference at our helipad on top of City Hall East, and we had a helicopter in the backdrop. And we joined with other lawmakers throughout the state on this issue. I'm very supportive of this ordinance. I think it's very necessary. The tagline we came up with is, "If you fly, we can't." Let me frame that. We're in the fourth year of a drought. We have a San Ana condition in the Hollywood Hills or other places within the city. Every second does count. We're going to launch a lot of air resources to confine that fire. If we cannot confine it while it's still small, it's going to burn for a long time. So if this drone is up, or any drones in the vicinity of our aircraft, our helicopters, we're going to have to ground our helicopters. The helicopters look very sturdy, they carry a lot of weight, but in some ways, they're very fragile. If a drone hits the rotor blade of a helicopter, it could cause a crash. So not to mention the lives that are lost. It's a multimillion-dollar piece of equipment that actually saves lives and property. So I applaud you for this effort, for being proactive, and I thank you for your support on this issue.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Members of the City Council. I think what's important to understand is that this ordinance does not impose any new restrictions on drone operators. What it does is it creates a new enforcement mechanism to enforce the rules and regulations that the FAA has already imposed on drone operators. What this ordinance does is it gives local law enforcement the authority to cite drone operators for those rules and regulations the FAA has imposed, so that we can enforce through criminal sanctions. The FAA imposes only civil penalties. In other words, they can revoke a pilot license or authorization to operate a drone, or they can impose monetary penalties. But what this ordinance does is it gives our local law enforcement agencies the ability to criminally prosecute a drone operator for violating those FAA rules, regulations, and guidelines.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise, really, to thank you and Mr. Englander for your work on this. This is a really serious public safety issue. It's also, I got to say, in my district, a huge nuisance in neighborhoods. We have lots of drones in my district, particularly in Mar Vista. We've gotten lots of reports of drones hovering over people's backyards. My next-door neighbor, for instance, about a month ago, was in her nightgown in her backyard, gardening in the morning, and there was a drone hovering above her backyard. So I know that wasn't the intention to address that through this, but because of the prohibition on five miles within an airport between LAX and Santa Monica Airport, I get the benefit of this covering the bulk of my district. So I'm very glad to see this. Wish the governor had signed some of the other legislation that was on his desk last week. I'm pretty disappointed that he didn't, but thank you to both of you for this and look forward to it being implemented.
Thank you. Mr. Englander?
Yeah, I just want to also recognize and thank our Congressman, Adam Schiff. He's been carrying the federal legislation on this and working very closely with the FAA in putting these rules and regulations together, as well as Assemblymember Mike Gatto, who on the state side has partnered with us on this as well. This is reasonable legislation to regulate and make sure that we have the tools to enforce what the FAA guidelines are here in Los Angeles. And remember, if they fly, we can't. We've got to remember what happened in New York, where birds took down an aircraft, and that had a great outcome, where they landed on the Hudson. And, but, you know, that's not always the case. And those were birds, birds that went into the engine, not heavy pieces of plastic and metal that can really cause havoc and wreck havoc on aircraft. So really appreciate the partnership with the Fire Department on this, as well as our City Attorney's Office, who's done extensive work. And thank you so much, Janet, for all your help and expertise in this as well. Thank you, Mr. President, for your help and support.
Thank you. I do thank the both of you. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, let's, and before we move on, Mr. Garza, you were removed earlier, and that was for the entire meeting, not just for that item. So you were removed, and I'm going to ask you to step out in the lobby area. Thank you. Okay, the next item, item 19. Mr. Englander, item 19. Are you ready for 19? Okay, let's go 19.
Thank you once again, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Maggie Goodrich to come on up as well, if I could. Colleagues, a while back, I looked at customer service and what we can do to make the Los Angeles Police Department much easier, user-friendly, customer-friendly, as well as to the general public, freeing up valuable resources and staff time, valuable officers' time, in writing less violent-type crime reports, mostly traffic collisions, theft, things of that nature. We all know that if you get into a fender-bender, if you get into... We all know that if you get into a fender bender, if you get into a collision, you have to submit that report to your insurance company. And in fact, 85% of the reports that are requested from the Los Angeles Police Department are for traffic collisions. That's about 75,000 reports a year, 75,000 reports. You can imagine the staff time required to go through, pull the proper reports, and mail them, not to mention the cost. Currently, the city charges $25 to provide that report, and we feel it's far too much. So it's costing us millions of dollars here in the city in staff time, valuable resources, and trying to return those, turn those reports around. The other part of that is, if you get involved in one of these, a small traffic collision that doesn't result in any injury, if you lose your cellphone, many cellphone providers and insurance companies for those coverage protections require you to get a police report. You've got to take the time off of work, out of school, away from your family, to go down to the police department and fill out a police report. It makes no sense. Not only do you have to do that, you're taking an officer's valuable time that could, quite frankly, be working on something much more important. The ability to fill out an online police report in the comfort of your own home, in your own privacy, in your, on your own time, is a time that has come. And so, putting this forth, I'm delighted to report that we actually have an agreement, and Mrs. Goodrich is going to walk us through some of that and how it's going to work out. We have an agreement with a company that can provide just that, and we are not the first city or police department to offer this service. And so, it's foolproof. The reduction in cost to the consumer is from $25 now will only be $7, and you can do it in the comfort and the privacy of your own home 24 hours a day without taking your time. And I want to thank also Councilmember Blumenfield for supporting this through his innovative technology fund with the mayor as well, and recognizing this, and look forward to moving this forward.
Thank you.
For your member.
Thank you.
So there are two parts to this system. The first will be the online reporting system that will allow members of the community, as you said, to fill out a lost report, for example, for their cellphone from the comfort of their own home, not have to drive to a police station, go to a front desk and take up an officer's time in getting that lost report completed. And the other is the report distribution system, which will allow for involved parties in a traffic accident to go online and request a copy of that report. Today, you have to either come to the police headquarters and pay that $25 fee, and stand at a window and wait for your report, or you have to mail a check-in and wait several weeks to get that report. So now you'll be able to do that instantly, again, from your home, or office, or school, or wherever you may be. And I just want to thank you, Councilmember Englander, for your leadership in bringing this to the city, and to Councilmember Blumenfield as well. The Innovation Fund to be able to support the implementation of the system really helped us a lot, and we're looking forward to getting this off the ground as quickly as possible.
Thank you. This is a bold move. It's a simple one, but it's bold. And it's one that utilizing current cutting-edge technology where it's very safe, you still sign it, by the way, under penalty of perjury, that you're, just as if you would in front of an officer at the desk at a station, that you're submitting a true crime report. So it has those protections built in. It's great for customer service, and again, freeing up the valuable time of our officers. Maggie, I can't thank you enough for all the hard work and effort that you've put in, not only to this, but everything you do for the Los Angeles Police Department, for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Englander. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if we could please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved. Okay, we're going to reconsider item two. So let's, on item two, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And Mr. Coretts, after this, prepare for your issue. So I want to call up Hassan. Where's Hassan on, this is on item two? And I'll just let you identify the last name. I don't want to butcher it, sir. Go right ahead.
I'm here for Roadstar Motorsports Corporation. I'm here to ask-
Speaking to the mic.
I'm here for Roadstar Motorsports Corporation, here to ask the council for an extension.
And could you repeat your name again? Okay, if you give me, give us a moment. So I'll hold this, and if you would just stick around for a few moments. Okay, I want to, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. There have been requests to continue item 1D to October 28th, and 1J to November 13th, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order? We have a few cards. You want me to take those first, or do you want to start out? We do the cards last? Your choice. Okay, so I want to call up Terry Cohen Link, I think it is. Terry Cohen, please. I see you coming up. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Members of the city council, I live in CD5 in an area called Beverlywood, and I sit on the board of directors of the HOA. And we want to encourage CD5, all of the council districts, LADWP, Metropolitan Water District, to continue the very useful public education, outreach, rebates, and other means to help neighborhoods become more water-wise. We're all struggling with this, and we've found that what you've been doing has been very helpful. We encourage you to continue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Spindler.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. 100% against this. Yesterday, I saw the water on right out here in the courtyard. The biggest abuser of water is the city of Los Angeles. The next worst is the county. Go over here, I, all you cameras, you go over there to the county and see their water fountains spewing water. At least here in LA, the mayor has prevented, and it's turned off all the fountains. All of the county fountains are on. Go check it out. And then, I can't believe, you want to shut off water for water abusers. Who's, who's, who's to say who's a water abuser? You can go around to private homes, say you're a water abuser, and then shut off their water. I'm telling you right now, we don't have enough water. We all must pitch in. We don't need Big Brother. We don't need Garcetti. We don't need Herb Wesson to tell us what to do. And if you live in an apartment and you waste water, your landlord should turn you in. We don't need more laws. We don't need, I mean, look what this says. It says severe financial penalties. What is that? $10,000, $20,000? And I want you to realize, they're not going to hit the people west of La Brea, they're going to hit minorities. They're going to hit black, brown, and yellow minorities on this. We don't need Big Brother. The whole world, are they doing this in San Francisco? No, only here with Heil, Heil Garcetti. He's going to be the head water inspector for 4 million people. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Spindler.
Right. What do you think about this?
Well, I think, look at the, I like the bucket, because LA City is a piece of garbage. It belongs in a trash can, like this trash can. Now, I go, I go to county meeting yesterday, and over there, over there, they have a lot of fountains on, wasting water all over the fucking city. The county wastes the water, all the beautiful fountains, splashing kids over there in the new park. And what does Herbie do? And what do you do, DWP? Nothing, nothing. You do not do shit. You do not stop the county from wasting the water. Please, Merit Antonovich, turn off the fucking fountains. You are wasting the water. You are killing the people. Listen to me. Listen to me.
And the pig makes a good point, and I appreciate it. Like over in Bel Air, you complain. Rich Jews, that's all you do in the media is talk about them using the water. They pay for the water. Do not find people for paying for water. You cannot shut people's water off. It's a human right. Utilities are a human right. You cannot shut people's water off because you artificially create a floor. And the more you save, the more you have to pay. I go to all kinds of meetings at the DWP. The DWP is a criminal organization, because what it's doing, it's going to lower your consumption rate and raise your cost of the water, because the costs are fixed. Water delivery costs are fixed. Electric delivery costs are fixed. The more you, the less you use, the more you wind up paying for it. So everybody tonight, turn on your sprinklers and water in the streets.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Coretts, back to you. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, for hearing this item today. Every day we wait to act on this waste, tens of thousands of gallons of water in what is fast becoming our most precious resource. And as you know, the Center for Investigative Reporting found that one of the homes in Bel Air is using an astonishing 11.8 million gallons of water a year. That is 32,000 gallons a day when the average person uses 131 gallons. And I put this trash can up here with a couple of coffee cups to show you the analogy, that this is the difference between what an average person uses and, and, and the cups are what are used by an average person, that's what's used by our abusers. I think that we all would assume that even our worst abusers only use a tiny fraction of this. The worst abuser in Bel Air is spending $90,000 a month for their water. You almost have to work to use that much. I'm assuming they have four swimming pools, they empty them out with frequency, they have non-recirculating fountains, and they have a giant property full of grass that is watered on a daily basis. We also found out that in addition to the state's biggest user, Bel Air had 19 customers each pumping more than 2.8 million gallons per year, and that is a whole of the 100 worst water abusers in the entire state, 92 of them out of 100 are in Los Angeles. I introduce this motion to say it's time to stop. As a city, we've been working too hard to conserve, too hard to build a local and sustainable water supply, and I'm taking responsibility for the extravagant and embarrassing use of water in my district. It's a slippery slope to move towards a time where water is only for those who can most afford it. We're a city known for conspicuous consumption, but as of a few years ago, we're living in a new world where the old rules don't apply. I don't care what else you do in these mansions, but when hard-working, responsible Angelinos from all walks of life are ripping out their lawns, putting buckets in their showers with them in order to water their plants, and flushing their toilets only once a day, it's not only unfair, it's ridiculous. I'm here to say you don't have free rein to recklessly and flagrantly use up one of our most precious resources. Especially with water and climate change, we're all in this together, and we all need to do our part. And so I'd like to hear first from DWP, and then make some requests of them.
Thank you. I'm Marty Adams. I'm the Senior Assistant General Manager for the Water System at Water and Power, and I'm with these, Penny Falcon from our Water Resources Group. Certainly, the issue of individual water waste by these sort of mega-users is a thing that's been really prevalent in the news recently, and something that we have to find a way to get our arms around. We're not alone in this issue. There are other cities that are dealing with this. Some of the large agencies, including Northern California, are trying to deal with these sort of mega-users that the current regulations don't seem to have a way to rein them in. We did make modifications to the water conservation ordinance, came to the council in June. It seems that, looking at that ordinance and looking at how we do enforcement, and some of the tools that we have at our disposal is the best way to try to change some of the behavior for the large water users. Certainly, we've done some outreach already. We sent 4,600 letters to the top 1% of our water users. Our top 2,000 users are part of our Water Smart program and get feedback, and we're doing much more patrolling in the high-use areas in addition to the campaigns such as the Save the Drop, but clearly, not everyone is getting the message. And so, we are going to continue to do outreach to these users. We're going to set ourselves up to do more day-to-day monitoring of their water meters and water use, but we will look at making changes, recommending changes to the water conservation ordinance, so we can have some more enforcement tools and better ways to actually measure how they're using water. Some of these properties are very large. When the ordinance was drafted 15 years ago, we didn't really have many of these mega-properies and mega-users, and there's a number of very large properties. And so, it's important to understand how the water is being used. A large water bill doesn't necessarily mean waste, but it certainly, in the highest users, is very difficult to explain how they could possibly be using as much water as they are in accordance with the water conservation ordinance. We want to, we want to get inside the walls and check that out, and make sure that we can help them to save. Ultimately, we want to change behavior and make sure that people are saving water. That's really what this is all about.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask us to consider a few things. Number one, as you work with Mr. Bonin and Mr. Fuentes on the tiered water pricing system, I'd like to add a top tier of residential water use, where when you hit that tier, the price doesn't just go up, it goes up dramatically to a capped level of use. If possible, the funds from that specific tier could be used for turf-removal watershed approach for homeowners with the greatest need. In addition, I'd also like to establish a higher number as a cap, and when you hit that cap, we send you a one warning letter, we give you a month, and then we shut off your water. Because we recognize, right now, our worst user is spending around $1 million a year. In many cases, going from $1 million to $10 million might make them sit up and take notice. That's a lot of money just for water, but it might not. So I think we need that second step as well. Also, I'd like us to request that DWP begin this effort by sending a letter to the top water wasters, saying the city of Los Angeles demands that they substantially reduce their water use immediately. We live in one city, not two, and it's time people start behaving like it. So as an example, and I'd ask, obviously, DWP to help us find the appropriate levels, but let's say that they were, they were using water at a rate of $1 million gallons a year. One might ask that that be the first cap tier, and above that, they pay 10 times the rate that they were paying in the other tiers. And perhaps at $5 million gallons a year of water use, they then are- And perhaps at 5 million gallons a year of water use, they then are told they have a cap, and they have to stay below that or they get their water shut off. So I'd like to have you look at establishing that kind of a system at the top, figuring out legally whether we have the ability to do all those things, and come back to us either with the rest of Mr. Bonin's and Mr. Fuentes' efforts or sooner. Because I think with a handful of people, we can save an incredible amount of water, and we need to act, and we need to act now. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Thank you two for coming.
14 ayes.
Can we remove our props, Mr. Coretts? The cups are cute, but if we could remove... Okay, now, we're prepared to vote on item two. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move to item one. Mr., Mr. Coretts, is that a, did you push your board by mistake? Okay, why don't we remove Mr. Coretts from the board for now? Item one, Mr. Akala? Mr. Walsh? And Mr. Spindler?
Item one, on behalf of the people being harassed by you, the assholes at City Hall, putting liens on their property for 600 and some dollars, 3,000 and some dollars, 700 and some dollars, 3,000 and some dollars, 1,000 and some dollars, uh, 3,000 and some dollars, 3,000 and some dollars, 6,000 and some dollars, 1,000 and some dollars, 4,000 and some dollars, 6,000 and some dollars, 3,000 and some dollars, 1,000 and some dollars, 2,000, 4,000 and some dollars. Will this ever end, all these illegal actions against the people by a class of people called the politicians, the legislators, the motherfuckers? Huh? Is it ever gonna end? When are you assholes gonna understand that the people pay your salaries and they don't need to be penalized?
Stay on the subject.
Too many liens on people.
Then stay on that subject.
I am on that subject. I'm telling you, stop your illegal process of putting liens on people. You're making them homeless, you assholes, and you talk about homelessness like as if it was not a big issue. It is a big issue. You just went out there and said, "We had a huge spike on homelessness."
Now, stay on this subject.
Yeah, where do you think it comes from? It comes from these. You put liens on people, then you sell your, the house from under them. That's called making more homeless people. But you'll never understand, you assholes.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. These are liens, not against tenants. These are liens against landlords. I've never heard of a homeless landlord. What, and I've had people stop me on the street and say, "Thanks for telling us what to do." If there's a problem in your, in your apartment, if something is broken there, if the water heater doesn't work properly, and the landlord does nothing, you go to the city, and then the city writes up the landlord, and if the landlord doesn't fix it, the landlord doesn't get your rent anymore until the landlord repays and, and pays off the fines. These are 15 excellent liens up here, and as I said, when the city of Los Angeles does a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you.
Mr. Spindler.
Yes, everybody's favorite subject. What, CD5, we have a lien? 15754 West Magnolia Boulevard, I'm claiming the Yon Kippur exception to this lien. Under the city charter, this lien, since I've invoked it, must be dismissed. 73355, it's in the city charter, deeply buried. Any, it says in part, any Jew with a lien at the meeting...
No, you're off the subject. You're off the subject. Stay on the subject.
But that's, you don't want to admit that to the public.
No, anyway, you're off the subject. Thank you very much. You're off, Sergeants, take him to his seat. Stay on the subject, you get your time. Off the subject, you're not going to speak on that. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Weezer, we're gonna go to item 22. I want to start off on this item with you, or do you want me to start with Mr. Coretts? Okay, Paul, Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. This day has been a long time in coming with the vital work of the Mar Vista Community Council and our beloved Bill Rosenthal, who introduced the motion to allow backyard beekeeping all the way back in 2011. When he left the council, I and others took up the Bee Banner and appreciate all the council and city staff's support since then, especially from council members Weezer and Bonin and from the Planning Department. And I want to be clear, and I've mentioned this before, there's no one more afraid of bees than I am. The last time I got stung, my entire leg swelled up and I had to use a cane for weeks. But what I'm more afraid of is colony collapse disorder, which has killed off nearly a third of U.S. honeybee colonies. And so I've followed and supported this motion all along. Staff is taking a hard look at backyard beekeeping ordinances from other cities and have put together a staff report that reflects best practices. I'm satisfied the planning staff has done an appropriate amount of outreach to educate the public. I'm also pleased at the amount of outreach the advocates have done to neighborhood councils all over the city. We have received supportive community impact statements from an astonishing number of neighborhood councils, more than 20. Bees do especially well in Los Angeles. We're not sure why, but it's probably because of the low agricultural pesticide use. And appropriately, we should be stewards of the survival of bees. Our city attorney has done his due diligence in making sure our residents are safe, our honeybees are safe, and we can all live together safely in our urban jungle. So I support this item and ask for your aye vote.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, I'm gonna keep a cane handy just in case a bee gets in here, huh? Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And something that I got from Mr. Englander is to say that there's been a lot of buzz about this since 2012 when Mr. Rosenthal opened up the floodgates. But I want to thank everyone who's been working on this for some time now, and I want to thank all our partners here in council and our advocates for supporting this important legislation. Today is a great victory for bees, for beekeepers, and our environment. As Mr. Coretts mentioned, this was actually a 2011 motion from our dear friend, former council member Bill Rosenthal, but it languished for a while. In 2013, beekeeping advocates came to my office and Mr. Coretts announced us to support this and move this along the process. We did some preliminary work and had conversations with departments and started moving this through the planning committee and the city process. What we adopted today, what we hopefully adopt today, is a smart, common sense ordinance that will allow beekeeping in backyards throughout the city neighborhoods. It has been well documented that bees, which are so important to our food supplies, are in trouble. They face an assortment of ecological stresses like the climate crisis, disease, and the overuse of pesticides. The bee population has dropped as much as 40%, and the shortage of bees has forced California almond growers to rent out highs for pollination at high prices and from across the country and even across the world, as far away as New Zealand. What we're doing locally won't solve that, but it can help. It can ensure that there's a healthy local population in reserve, and it can further support the small-scale local agriculture that is starting to reemerge in our area. Our Planning Department has held countless meetings on this and has been very transparent and diligent in developing this regulation. It offers simple expectations of best management practices for urban beekeeping, which can help minimize conflicts with neighbors. We did this without creating anything onerous. This is a workable and will allow beekeepers to collaborate openly and not have to worry about the city inspector peering over their fences. We are working to become a more sustainable city to confront the environmental crises of today, and bees and beekeepers are a part of that solution. It's time to support beekeeping in the city of Los Angeles residential neighborhoods, which will help our bee population and make the city safer and greener. Thank you, and I ask for your aye vote on this item.
And Mr. President?
Okay, I'm gonna go in, Mr. Clark?
Pardon me, sir. I just wanted to announce that amending motions 22A and 22B have been circulated and are before council for its consideration.
Okay, we've got public comment on this item. So if I could add, when I call your name so that we can move this, I'm gonna call at least three people at a time, come to the center aisle, one after the other one. So it looks like Adele Wilcox, Marcia Rozell, and William, is it Snedding? Please come forward. Please, if I called your name, let's, let's move it. Now I'm looking for Susan Klenner. Okay, sir, identify yourself.
Do you have this paper in front of you? I presented it in my comments. I'm Dale Wilcox, beekeeper and spokesperson for Beekeeper, Bee Safe Alliance. If you look on the back of the definition of a backyard beekeeping, it says, "The keeping or maintenance of an apiary and a hive as an accessory use." Who can keep an apiary in a hive? Can you, Mr. Wesson? Can any beekeeper here keep an apiary in a hive? Since March, I watched to see how many committees would pass this mistake on and whether even the city attorney would catch this. It's careless. None caught the mistake. This mistake is indicative of the carelessness and irresponsible approach of safety first for all residents affected by this ordinance in not providing remedies for the bee venom allergic, provisions for sensitive use areas such as schools and parks, size regulations for hives, and warning signs for the city workers. Katie Peterson changed the wrong council motion she used after I pointed it out in her staff report. Will you, council members representing all your constituents, change not only this ordinance mistake for form and legality, but also to add to the ordinance measures for the protection of all our neglected community members and consider safety first? Will you change it for an A-plus rating, or are you just happy with a B-minus job in passing it to get by so, like many of our failing schools? Please change the ordinance to affect and to, please change the ordinance to help those that are affected by the beekeeping ordinance.
Thank you. If I could add the next?
Hi, my name is Marcia Rozell, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Yes, I have been here before, so if I look familiar, that's why. Please, please, listen, just a little bit this time. I'm an avid backyard gardener, and I like bees, I appreciate bees, and I understand that we all want to help bees. That said, two of my kids are severely allergic to bee stings, so when I think bees, I think safety. And I do what I can to keep them safe. They carry EpiPens, they wear bracelets, they've gone to immunotherapy shots, but I need you guys to do what you can now. And what you can do is have an ordinance that has safety regulations, that addresses public safety. The way the ordinance is written right now, you could have a neighbor with five or eight or 10 beehives five feet away from a school, five feet away from a public playing field, five feet away from a public pool. And a beehive, there's no limit on the size. It's not that white box that we all think of. A beehive can be as big as a refrigerator, because the ordinance doesn't stipulate it. There could be 10 refrigerator-sized beehives next to a soccer field, where I'm doing what I can to protect my kids, but I need you guys to do what you can to protect the public. We're asking that you please take the time to redraft this ordinance, and we feel that you have an obligation to write a carefully considered and comprehensive ordinance. We need an ordinance with clearly defined regulations that promote responsibility, safety, accountability, and enforcement. And I think it was interesting that earlier in this meeting, you guys talked about first responders. You were talking about firefighters. You were talking about earthquake situations. How about the firefighter who shows up for a barbecue fire and the firefighter's not aware that there are beehives next door? There's no signage. They go through the neighbor's backyard. They're spraying down a barbecue.
Thank you, thank you.
Oops, now they're spraying beehives too.
Thank you very much. Your time's expired.
Now they have two emergencies.
Your time has expired. The next, and if I could get a Rob McFarland to be on the alert, and after that, I'm gonna call again on Terry Cohen Link. Sir, come forward and identify yourself.
Yeah, William Sheding, I'm a Mar Vista resident, and I'm also a member of the Mar Vista Community Council, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself here. Mr. President, council members, I appreciate your consideration of this matter, and I hope you'll get your support. As mentioned, this did start in Mar Vista with Bill Rosenthal, and Honeylove has taken, taken up the project and gotten it forward to this point, so I applaud all of them. So the city of Los Angeles, the city of angels, will now be a sanctuary for bees. Bees pollinate about a third of the food that you eat on a daily basis, and colony collapse is probably affected by insecticides and pesticides, of which there's practically none in Los Angeles. So this is truly a sanctuary for bees. And bees being dangerous, I have a beehive, I've had one for three or four years. The only time that they give me any trouble is if I give them trouble. Bees are not aggressive unless they're disturbed. My bees have stung less people than most people's dogs have bitten, and they're way safer than some people's dogs that I've seen in the paper. So thank you for the support in this. Have a great day.
Okay, next. Identify yourself.
I'm Susan Klenner. I live in Woodland Hills in Council District Three, and I want to speak on, in support of the ordinance principally. The job is done. All the hard work has been done by this council, by the Planning Department, by the Planning Commission, and by the community organizations that have stepped up to support the proposed residential beekeeping ordinance in order to do our part to preserve an endangered species. So all of you and anyone who I've forgotten, I want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I could get Sebs Bailey to get behind Ms. Cohen. Good morning and welcome.
Hi, my name is Rob McFarland. I'm a co-founder of Honeylove.org, and I just wanted to come here today to say thank you to all the council members and your amazing staff for all the hard work and effort that you've put in to help make LA a more sustainable place. I'd also like to say that we're very pleased with the Planning Department's extensive research and the study that they conducted, and stand by all of their recommendations. On a final note, I would just like to say thank you to Bill Rosenthal for getting us started. Thank you.
Thank you. So come forward. It seems like I just saw you seven and a half minutes ago.
You did. Terry Cohen Link, I want to thank the council. I want to thank the leadership of Councilman Weezer, Coretts, the Planning Commission and Department who did a really thorough job. This is a historic vote, and we congratulate you, hoping that you will vote for its success. Thank you.
Thank you. And as my next speaker comes up, I am looking for Paul, Paul from Honeylove. I'm looking for David King and a Walker Rollins. Identify yourself.
My name is Sebs Bailey. I'm a Los Angeles homeowner. I work with Honeylove, and I'm a...
I work with Honeylove, and I'm a beekeeper and bee educator. All my neighbors know I'm the crazy bee lady, so when it's 90 degrees and I'm wearing clothes and a bee suit and I'm helping a neighbor get bees out of their barbecue, I wonder if it's all worth it. And days like today make it all worth it. And I want to just thank you very much for your diligence and for going through this ordinance as thoroughly as you did. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your votes today.
Okay, thank you. Next, come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Paul Hakimian. I'm representing Honeylove.org. I'm one of the board of directors. I'm a beekeeper in Santa Monica. We have an ordinance. I'm one of six registered beekeepers, so they know if the fire department comes, they know I have bees. So I think that the ordinance, the way it's written, is written well. I think we're gonna become a historical city along with New York, San Francisco, and I'm excited, and I believe that you guys are doing the right thing today, and I want to applaud you for hopefully getting this ordinance passed today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, City Council. My name is David King. And first of all, I'd like to know, as you have heard, bees are a major part of our agricultural system, and bees are surviving quite well in cities versus in the agricultural lands. Los Angeles is perfectly suited for beekeeping because it has flowers in bloom 12 months out of the year, so we can actually do a much better job of keeping bees than other cities. Many cities have already approved beekeeping, including such cities as Paris, which is famous for its bees, Salt Lake City, San Francisco, and even New York. In this most auspicious time, we shouldn't let ourselves be beaten by New York. So I would encourage the council to vote for this ordinance. I would also like to point out that no matter what has been said about bees by other people, the bees will still be here, whether or not they're being kept or not. It is much better to have kept bees than unkept bees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Walker Rollins, Kareem Saleh, Andrew Douglas, Ava Post. Please line up. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Walker Rollins. I run an organization called One Strong Hive here in Los Angeles. I maintain multiple hives, offer services to remove and rehome feral bees, run workshops, do educational outreach, and have been doing so for the last 18 years. The goal of the organization was to build community, not only to keep bees, but to share knowledge of what bees have to offer us as human beings. The true nature of a hive is a good example of what democracy could be. There is much to be learned from 120 million-year-old inhabitants of our planet. Most people believe that there is a hierarchical nature in the beehive. The queen is often considered the sole decision-maker, but in reality, decisions are made by consensus of the entire hive community. During the last four years, we have spent getting this vote passed, hopefully, I have seen our own democratic process, and I'm very pleased at the wisdom which is now being expressed by this vote. I'm here to thank you all for being participants and supporters in favor of allowing bees and their beekeepers to continue their good work in the City of L.A. I would also like to thank Mitchell Farrell, who while campaigning in my neighborhood, made a promise to me that he would help legalize beekeeping, and thank you for keeping that promise.
Okay, next. Please come forward, identify yourself. And Max Wong, if you could get at the end of the line. Yes.
Hi, my name is Kareem Saleh. I'm an urban beekeeper. I heartily support this ordinance, and I encourage you to vote for it. It makes sense. It's better to do it this way than being undercover, if I may say. And you'll get, how to say that? It's been a long way to come here in front of you to vote for that ordinance. I'm glad it's gonna pass. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Andrew Douglas. I appreciate the opportunity to quickly give a comment on this. Thank you very much to then-councilmember Bill Rosendahl for bringing this forward, and very appreciative of councilmembers Weezer and Corretts and their recent efforts as well. Thank you, council, for standing up for biodiversity. And also, I'd like to add that, yes, New York, yes, San Francisco, but also London, Chicago, Vancouver, these are all cities that will be joining, who haven't had any upticks in bee asides or anything. So thank you very much again for your consideration, and take care.
Next.
Hello, my name is Ava Post. I'm a plant scientist. I'd like to thank the council for passing this. And I would also just like to comment on the fears that previous commentators have had on bees. I'm allergic to bees, and if anyone or their child is allergic to bees, you should be carrying an EpiPen with you. That's just, if you're going outside, you could get stung anywhere. And moreover, the fear of aggressive bees is kind of unfounded. Honeybees don't look for children to attack, they're looking for flowers and nectar to bring back to the hive, and as long as a water supply is there for them, they're not gonna be swarming everywhere. And teaching kids and parents to fear bees will not expand their understanding of the environment, nature, the realities of colony collapse disorder, and climate change or insect behavior. So I'd like to thank the council, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Please come and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Max Wong, and I'm a beekeeper, and I also teach beekeeping at Mount Washington Elementary to all three kindergarten classes. I have been an illegal urban beekeeper for the past eight years, and although I'm very sad to be losing the street credibility that comes with being a member of the Honeybee Underground, I'm really, really excited that this ordinance is going to pass, because this will allow all Angelenos to participate in a green economy that produces next-to-no pollution, cannot be outsourced beyond the community, and is a way for people to literally bootstrap their way out of poverty. And it's a really critical link in solving hunger in this city. So thank you to the city council, and thank you so much to the planning department, who has spent four years working on something that's really workable and tailored specifically to the needs of the people of the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Wana Kala, where are you?
Very near.
Followed by Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Walsh.
I'm closer to you than you can imagine.
Stay on the subject.
The subject is beekeeping. To bee or not to bee, that is the question. I think to bee is the answer, because bees are beneficial. Or bee unofficial, I'm trying to be clever, bee unofficial. When I was little, I hit a wasp nest, white Anglo-Protestant nest. No, a real wasp. They followed me and stung me, 10 of them right here. I think they made me more intelligent. I never messed with wasps ever again, but I am messing around with rednecks.
Stay on the subject.
Donald Trump is the supreme redneck, and I'm gonna keep on telling him that. Anyway, bees are good for you, they give you honey, nobody's talking against wasps, and they also sting you real hard.
Stay on the subject.
Yeah. The subject is, when you get stung, you're either allergic or not. I'm not allergic to anything. I've been stung by even scorpions. The damn scorpion passed away.
Okay, you're, thank you, you're off the subject. Come on up, Mr. Spindler. When we have an item on scorpions, you're welcome to talk about your experience. Okay, Mr. Spindler.
So when you hear "bzzzz," be careful, because you have Africanized bee nests. I have one in my backyard right now. I put the spray on it. I didn't know, right in my backyard two weeks ago. They just start chasing you, they fly at your eye. I got stung in my eye, underneath my eye. They fly into the house with you and attack you. If these are Africanized, and you get near these things, these things will sting and sting until you kill them. They are dangerous. They do not belong in residential neighborhoods. These are very, very dangerous, and a lot of these people are messing with this stuff, and you're gonna allow people to mess with hybrid honeys that are Africanized in a small neighborhood? Wait till you see the lawsuit. The first anaphylactic that dies from any of this, your dumbasses get sued because you have authorized this in residential areas that are too overdensified. Vote no.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. We've been doing okay with the law we had now. I'm telling you right now, we don't want bee colonies in residential R1. Bees can, go Google bee sting pick and see what happens. You can die of anaphylactic shock, you can be blinded. Take a look at these pictures, and now, and small children, infants can die, and they're gonna vote, and let me tell you right now, these new colonies aren't gonna be opening where we Jews live, west of La Brea.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject. Mr. Walsh, you're off the subject. Thank you. All right, now, he's disturbing the meeting, members. Go on, sit down, Mr. Walsh. All right, Mr. O'Farrell. Now he's disrupting the meeting again. Ask him, and I told you twice, you did it again, I was gonna ask you to leave. So Sergeant, show him the lobby. You have to leave. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, I wanted to rise real briefly and just say a few words about this. There was a film that came out in 2009, it was called Vanishing of the Bees. In 2011, I moderated a screening of that film with an expert panel. It was earl education for me personally, but I had read up on colony collapse disorder. It's well documented. As has been mentioned, one out of every three bites of food we take is a result of a food that's been pollinated by honeybees. I love the fact that Los Angeles is about to engage in actually taking a step in solving the colony collapse disorder crises in the City of Los Angeles, and I think local action is really where it's at in this environment, where we get very little done because of inaction often at the federal level. The popularity of farmers' markets and community gardens in Los Angeles, and the fact that we can now garden on our parkways, I think really underscores what a perfect time this is to allow backyard beekeeping for Angelenos. And lastly, as someone who has severe allergies, and I get allergy shots every two weeks, since eating locally harvested honey that's harvested in the Glassell Park community where I live, my allergies have gotten better. They've improved, and it's been very noticeable. I still have them, but they've improved. So the fact that the city's about to exhibit leadership and approve backyard beekeeping at this time and date, I think, shows a resolve that we are prepared to move forward in a way that encourages a return to a more natural way of harvesting our food and a return to healthy eating that I think all of the neighborhoods in Los Angeles, especially those most underserved, can certainly use the benefit of. So I want to commend everyone for being part of this movement from the very beginning, our former colleague Bill Rosendahl for his foresight four years ago for introducing this resolution, and for the work that has continued on this council and the planning department to draft this ordinance, and I encourage an eye vote. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, which one of you wants to close?
I'll close.
Okay, then, Mr. Weezer? No, Mr. Corretts.
To bee or not to bee, that is the question. But there's really no question, we must have bees, and I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Thank you, and I, we've heard the benefits of moving forward with this ordinance, but the issue of safety should be addressed. Some of the public speakers brought that up, and in fact, this ordinance with its basic guidelines will encourage best practices to ensure proper care of bees and their hives. Also, any applicant must register with the County of Los Angeles Agricultural Commission. The guidelines also include local water source, how high the beehives can be maintained so that they go to other beehives or other places, and try to avoid or minimize contact with other humans. And in fact, expanded beekeeping can actually reduce bee problems by providing safe alternatives for the removal of problem swarms. Bee swarms are often attributable to dislocated colonies, and the proposal can actually reduce the number of unmanaged feral bee colonies and consequent unsupervised swarm. So this actually could help with the safety and dealing with the safety and concerns about bees and bee stings. So colleagues, I ask for your support on this item.
All right, let us prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, that's adopted as amended.
Please, 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 please. Yes, Mr. Clerk. Is there, are you having a technical?
Yes, sir. For clarification, that was adopted as amended by motions 22A and 22B.
Thank you. So now we're going into, I believe, is it general, general public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I want Mr. Previn, I have Derek Blakely. Mr. Walsh is not here. I've got Ashan Murphy. Please come forward.
Yes, Mr. Wesson, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And today, you approved approximately $10 million in legal settlements. Sir, that is a robust number, and yet, the public was never given a chance to sort of ask some of the questions. Kirkorian, who's a good guy in CD2, in budget and finance, he let us talk about county council for one minute. So I'm challenging the idea that one minute is appropriate for, I think it was $66 million on the day that I was up there, in liability costs, and then there was a whole other pile of outside council expenses to some of the great firms you adore, like Myers-Nave and, you know, Louis Brisbo. I mean, a lot of firms making a lot of money. We have a right to understand it. So, sir, all you gotta do is put it on the agenda, the people from the public, who are a little critical, who are a little supportive, will come down and talk about it. That's our system, okay? What you're doing here is improper, sir, and I'm gonna challenge you on it. And I've told Mr. Dion O'Connell, I just spoke with another city attorney, I can't stomach it. I asked Bonn and an Englander, who weren't even at the committee meeting, please, guys, just throw it on the desk. Nobody throws it on the desk. So you throw it into the garbage can that Mr. Corretts had, not appropriate.
Thank you.
Because the public cares. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So Mr. Blakely, followed by Murphy, followed by Oscar Mohammed, please come forward. Yes, sir, welcome.
Welcome, yeah, yeah. Thank you. My name is Derek Blakely, and I'm here to make a suggestion for the Crenshaw Rail Line. My proposal is that have at least one station named after Graham V. Woods, the man who conceived the idea for the light rail line. But he was more than that. He was a man concerned with public safety. He developed a communication system that allowed trains to send message to each other that saved lives. Graham V. Woods also developed an overhead wire and third rail system so that trains could be ran by electricity, because he was concerned with air pollution. This was in 1888. A station in his honor will remind anyone and everybody that passes through that public safety is everybody's responsibility. Thank you for your time, have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Ashan, followed by Oscar, followed by Henry Marine. Go ahead, Ashan.
Yeah, let's keep our sidewalks storm drains clean, the rains are coming. They keep talking about the rains coming. Opening dance, we should, that's it, thanks.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Marine, followed by Mr. Spindler and Mr. Akala. Yes, sir.
We should, my name is Oscar Mohammed. We should end capitalism and greed. And we see this division in L.A. among the African-American peoples. We see the disabled senior females in the trech house, they're serving the worst. They need more, they need more moral attention than they're not receiving there. We should end skid roads. We should move the black African-American homeless people off of skid roads. They have wasteland up there in Bakersfield. We can put the homeless people up there in Bakersfield and put them in tents, and we can take all that junk, put the American down on skid roads. They're taking the beauty away from the buildings, and remove that off the, and remove that off the sidewalks. We should end police brutality. We should end misconduct in law enforcement. The policemen should stay on the compound. They shouldn't leave unless they're called to leave. The policemen and the law enforcement should be able to roam around and shoot innocent people in the back of the head, shooting them in the back without any accountability.
Thank you. Mr. Marine, followed by Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Akala.
Where's city attorney at?
Oh, Mr. City Attorney, why did you fail to tell these members of this council that the only body that's allowed to hold money that's sheltered from pay of city employees is Lasers and the Great West 457B IRA plan? So, we know by the fact that the city and the unions agreed to be middlemen and hold that money. Right the first day they took it, they had to make back payments to Lasers for workers employed past six months, and for workers employed less than six months, they had to make back payments to the IRA plan, 457B. Now, come, you ain't got enough damn common sense to figure that out. And why you think you can just take some of God's goddamn money and don't have to give it back? It's a reflection on your parents.
Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Akala.
Throwing out John Walsh, throwing him out. Come on, Herbie, please, man, you know? He only talked about the Jews. It's no big deal. They're not gonna raise the bees. And, you know, you wanna throw out the Jew. Well, at least in Supervisor District Five, vote no on Mitchell Englander and keep him here and out of county business. I was over at the county. They don't want him over there. Vote no on Mitchell Englander for Supervisor. Woo, woo. The train wreck. Vote no on Mitchell Englander. Woo, woo. The train wreck of L.A. City, vote no. Vote no on Mitchell Englander. Woo, woo. Anybody but Englander for Supervisor, vote no. Woo, woo. He's a train wreck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Akala. And I received a card from Ms. Marsha Rozelle.
You're not to be an asshole, once again. Oh, throwing out Mr., come on, just because he's a Jew. There was a famous Jew that got crucified, and he, he's made it big. He's all over the world. They call him Christians. They're all over the world, you know? The guy was a Jew, and nobody threw him out. They just crucified him. Is that what you're gonna do to Mr., the guy that waves his arms like that? Why do you crucify him, just 'cause he's a Jew?
This has nothing to do with city business, Mr. Akala.
It is, it is. I, I'm, I'm here to let you know that you are a tyrant. You throw us out for nothing, and we are the people. We elected you, you idiot. We are the ones that voted for you.
Thank you. Your time has expired, and move to my district, and you'll be able to vote for me or against me. It's okay. Now, you're, you're disrupting the meeting. Ms. Rozelle, we're gonna call you up to end this.
Okay, so I'm back. Apparently, this will be my last time here. For, for general comments, I realize, I, I don't know, we're not supposed to talk about something that was talked about. So, I just want to talk about process. As just a regular old citizen, because it's been really frustrating, I have to say. And there was a public hearing on the bee ordinance in March that nobody was aware of, and then it just barely came out in a local paper the day before the deadline to, for you guys to hear about it. And when it was talked about that, like 17 out of 20 community councils in my district had voted for it, it turned out that those 17 community councils that voted for it, voted on the idea, because the idea's great. We'd all love to help bees. They all voted on it before the ordinance was written. So, the three communities that voted on the ordinance after it was written, all three of them had issues, that it was not safe as written, and that was all ignored. I wrote to CPC, ignored.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just feel like a lot of people have been ignored.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, that ends general public comment. Mr. Clerk, what business is before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, announcements. If I could get everyone to please rise for adjourning motions, please rise. I'm going to look to my left side, which is Mr. Harris Dawson, and that side, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Englander. I now look to the right. Any adjourning motions? I don't see any members. This meeting is adjourned. See you Friday.